Great. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's roll call, all members are present, and we'd like to welcome Bella Drews, our student rep this year. So Bella will be joining us at the table for the remainder of the school year. So, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the open forum section. And the open forum is according to Board Policy 203. It's a 15-minute time period set aside to receive citizen input through this open forum segment, input from student staff. Parents and community members is valuable, and the board appreciates the time that you take to speak with us this evening. Individuals who wish to address the board may do so on a topic not on tonight's agendas. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual board members, employees, or students, nor may they speak or use vulgar or profane language. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules will lose their privilege to speak. Board members will listen respectfully to presenters, but will not engage individuals during this time. The board will not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding the issue presented. If any follow-up is needed, the superintendent or designee will get back to you. We ask if you would like to please send your comments from tonight, you can send them to us at the school board at Prior Lake Savage-MN-US-K-12. The vice chair clerk will put up a yellow card when you have 15 seconds left, and then a red when you need to stop. When you do come up to speak, I think we have three people this evening, if you just please state your name and your relationship to the district for the official record. And with that...
How many minutes?
Three minutes for each speaker. We have Joshua Servoy.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for letting me speak today. Josh Servoy, 4200 West 131st Street, Savage, Minnesota. Last time I was here, the CDC said that face masks are recommended in school, not required. We have now required them in this school district, where several other school districts have said that you do not have to have face masks on. New Prague, Cambridge, La Sueur, several of them. So, I'm coming here to ask you to take a vote, please, and let the parents make the decision for the children. So, this comes straight from the FrontlineDoctors.org. "It's a myth that masks prevent viruses from spreading. The overall evidence is clear. Standard cloth and surgical masks offer next to no protection against virus-sized particles or small aerosols." Excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous right now. A single version of SARS-CoV-2 is about .1 microns. The pore size in a surgical mask is 200 to 1,000 times that size. So, that's... It's 3.0 microns. So, face masks do not do anything. They do not block the COVID virus. They do not block the flu virus. In fact, they're very bad for someone to have them and breathing the CO2 in the whole time. So... Furthermore, by requiring children to wear a mask, you are promoting the idea that a mask can prevent or treat a disease, which is an illegal deceptive practice. It is unlawful to advertise that a product or service can prevent disease unless you possess competent and reliable scientific evidence. So, I brought my kids to school today. They checked in. They were... Had to wear a mask, beautiful little girls. They can't see the teacher's smile. They can't see the wonderful principal's smile at them. She's the best principal. I love her. They just can't... They can't see anybody laugh or smile, and they need that in their life to develop social skills. And I implore you, please, let the parents make the decision. Let them... Let them make the decision to have their kids go to school with masks or not. If the teachers want to, let them make the decision. Masks do nothing. If you just look into it, do your research, but I implore you, please do not let the kids breathe the CO2 in all day long. My oldest has asthma, and I had to go pick her up countless numbers of times last year because she's breathing in CO2 all day, and she had headaches all the time. We brought her to doctors, all kinds of doctors, neurologists, everything else. And it turns out it's the CO2 that she's breathing in from having the mask on all day. So, please let the kids make up... The parents make up their own minds. That's... Please. Please take a vote, and please let us make up our own minds. The CDC recommends it. It's not required. Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Okay, next up is Maryann.
Hi, I'm Maryann Jawackam, kindergarten teacher at Redtail Ridge. This year marks my 12-year teaching. I'm here to address my concerns regarding high class sizes happening at the elementary level. School starts on Friday, and my teammates and I will each have 25 and 26 kindergarteners, the highest in my teaching career. We've discussed our concerns with our principal, who supports us, as well as Jim and Emily in Human Resources. Our grade level in school are not the only ones in the district who have dealt with overwhelmingly large class sizes over the last few years. After having a conversation with HR last week, I learned that there are lots of things at the administrative and HR level that are taken into consideration before the decision is made whether or not to hire more teachers. I understand that these decisions are not made recklessly and that those working at the DSC work tirelessly to make sure that what they believe are the best decisions for our students and teachers are thought out, and for that, I'm grateful. What people at the DSC don't see is how our students' education is suffering when they add just a couple more students to our rosters. I, along with my team, invite DSC members to come into our classrooms and see firsthand where our concerns stem from. Whether it's just three or four extra kids makes all the difference to us teachers and how much differentiated and engaging instruction actually gets done in our classrooms. At the kindergarten level, our students are only five and six years old and starting their first formal year of education. And they don't know what it's like to even be a student or what school even is. They need our constant attention, guidance, love, and care. But with 25 and me with 26 students, it's going to be near impossible to make sure every child's academic and social needs are met on a consistent daily basis, as well as with the pandemic going on on top of it. Our district's strategic statement says that we will provide equitable student opportunities through personalized learning. Well, to be frank, that's not going to happen when students are packed into our classrooms the way they are this year. Our district needs to lower the maximum number of students per class, so it's no longer capped at 25. I believe that's the number HR told me. Or they need to make room in the budget to hire more full-time teachers. I'm going to keep fighting for our students and their education until something's finally done because I know it's not just me and my team. It's been happening for more than just this year. Thank you for your consideration.
Next up is Rachel Carlson.
Hi, I'm Rachel Carlson, 4231 Quaker Trail, Prior Lake. Thank you for your opportunity to speak and for choosing to serve this very important role for our community and especially for our children. Tonight, I would like to address the gifted and talented program in our district. I'm here as a representative of PLS, MCGT board, but also a concerned parent of children in the program. I have an eighth grader that went through the Sage program and a 10-year-old that was going to be starting fifth grade this year at Sage. Let me introduce you to that 10-year-old boy. One of the kindest boys alive, behavioral issues in first grade became short attention span and inability to sit still in second. He was getting bored in class. We were navigating a new ADHD diagnosis. He didn't score high enough on the new screener to take the full test and was refused when asked for an exception to take the full. I was told that if he was allowed to sit for the test, it would have to be offered to everyone. Shortly after, now medicated and another high MAP score, I promised him we would do everything we could. We paid for an independent IQ test, and he made it. At Sage, his behavior issues ceased, and he was constantly praised for his inclusiveness toward his peers. Then COVID struck, and this progress came to a screeching halt. Loneliness was winning. My husband and I are both self-employed, and I work in healthcare, so we don't have the option of being home with them. He seemed depressed with the DLA, so we went and saw his doctor, and he told us that he was not the only child experiencing this. Back in school, he was getting better, but would come home daily with stomach pains, headaches, and often lethargic. I'm convinced it was masks because I feel the same after a very long day at work. His emotional well-being was also most important at the time, but this year, things are different. He will no longer be attending Sage. The concern I emailed all of you about weeks ago, those answers came too late. We couldn't wait any longer because the private schools were filling up. We pulled him out. We broke his heart. But we knew it was in his best interest. But now I worry about those who didn't do it, who didn't leave the schools. My concern started with the disparity of class sizes between Sage and the rest of the district. But I've now been informed that the class sizes in our district are getting larger, and a class size of 34 students is not that uncommon. I would suggest that the class average shown on the district website should be updated to accurately reflect this new norm. Also, I'm concerned about the equity among gifted and talented students. Many of these children are neurodiverse and have behavioral issues and aren't qualifying for 504 plans. I know I'm going to run out of time. Why... I guess I'm asking, why were these numbers not shared with parents sooner? Why are we opening enrollment to DLA to students outside of the district when we will likely need to hire more teachers for them as the numbers climb, but we're not willing to hire more teachers for our own in-district kids to have smaller and safer class sizes? What kinds of support will be provided for these gifted kids? How many children are being left behind? And if our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential, why are we not identifying these kids younger, those with learning disabilities and ESL students? Lastly, the state provides gifted and talented revenue at $13 per pupil unit according to the Minnesota Statute, Section 126(c)(10) subdivision 2(b), and the district must reserve gifted and talented revenue and spend it, the revenue only, to identify gifted and talented students, provide educational programs for gifted and talented, and provide staff development to prepare teachers to best meet the unique needs of gifted and talented students. According to the 2122 PLSAS district financials, gifted and talented estimated revenue is $127,348 and has averaged $100,000 every year since 2011. The parents of these kids would like to know and need to learn how this money is being spent. Thank you.
Okay. All right, that concludes open forum. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So made.
By Jonathan, second.
Second.
By Amy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Next up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature. It'll be enacted in one motion. Tonight's consent agenda, the financials, the check wire transfer disbursement summary, the wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity, the building bond report 2018B, the monthly wire detail, the monthly health dental wire detail, the monthly check detail, the monthly ACH, the approval of the school board minutes from the regular school board meeting August 9th, the study session August 23rd, the special board meeting August 25th. Personnel items, as listed, the candidates for employment, resignations, the district retirements. We'll just make note of Mr... Messed his name up. I apologize. Antareth and Ms. Harper, congratulations on their retirements, and thank you for your service. And the leave of absences, as listed. Do I have a motion to exempt the consent agenda, as listed?
So made.
By Michael, second.
Second.
By Enrique. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes 7-0. The resolution acceptance of gifts. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution of gifts as listed in your board packet?
So made.
By Mary, second.
Second.
By Enrique. This is a roll call vote. Amy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 7-0. Laker Pride, Dr. Stallow.
Excellent. Good evening, board members. Thank you very much. I am definitely filled with Laker pride tonight as we finally began today welcoming students back to in-person learning five days a week. As we transition to this new academic year, we know that we're going to continue to have to navigate the pandemic and also begin to recover from it. I want to acknowledge that through all of this, there are a whole lot of emotions and have been, from fear and anxiety and grief to connections, joy, and accomplishments that we've all felt. Many of those emotions sometimes at the exact same time. In order to honor all that's happened over the last 18 months and to honor the people who made it happen, our staff, board members, our students, our leaders, our families and community, I'd like to invite you to sit back, remember, reflect what our journey through COVID-19 has been. And as we do that, I want you to anticipate the great things that we're going to be able to accomplish this year because of what we've all been through together. So, we have a video that we've put together that I'd just like you to watch and reflect on the last year and a half. Thanks, Kristi.
This is Laker Pride and everything that we have gone through together. The incredible work that our school, community, and families and students and staff have done is absolutely incredible. And to be, hopefully, continuing on the opposite side of that now, I think gives us a whole lot of hope for the year in front of us. So, welcome back. Like I said, it was great to see students with staff today. Thank you.
All right. Great. Next up is some unfinished business. The shelter lease. I think... Julie, you're going to do that? I think we had this at the study session.
Yes, we brought this to the study session. It's a very small dollar amount, about $100 for us to have a repeater and for our radios, district-wide.
Okay. Is there any questions, Nathan? I think it was pretty straightforward. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the shelter lease agreement, as listed?
So made.
By Mary, second.
Second.
By Julie. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes 7-0. And next up is the bond refinancing.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, I have Ayler's, our district's financial advisor. Jeff Sealy is here to discuss an opportunity for the district to refinance some bonds. There are two bonds that we will be discussing tonight and are looking for approval from the board to move forward with this opportunity.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. Nice seeing everyone again. And we're going to talk a little bit about saving some money for the district and the taxpayers. So, as Julie mentioned, you have two different bonds that have a, what we call, a call date coming up. That's an opportunity to refinance or refund, as we call it, the bonds. So, in your packet, you will have what we call our pre-sale report. I'm going to just hit some highlights on that. And then after that, you have an authorizing and a parameter resolution, a single resolution, that you will be adopting, and then we'll move ahead with the bond sale. We have two bonds that we're looking at. The... And we're combining them into a single bond. That single bond will be issued, and those bond proceeds will refinance those two earlier bonds. And the reason we're combining them is because there's some economies of scale, so it will save you a little more money. And the two bonds that we're refinancing were issued in 2013. And one was an all-facility bond. That's the larger one. That would be a direct savings to the taxpayers. And the smaller one is a capital facility. That would be a direct saving to your capital fund, so frees up a little money for capital. So, the new bonds are estimated at 13, just shy of $13.5 million. That number won't be known exactly until we sell the bonds because the premium will affect the power amount of the bonds. And it's a general obligation, which means you're putting your full taxing authority behind making the payments. Alternative facility and capital facility, those are the two bonds we're combining, refunding bonds. And they'll be issued, of course, Series 2021A. So, the 2023 through 2026 maturities, so principal payments for those years of the all-facility bonds issued in 2013, and then the capital facility bonds, also issued in 2013, that has the 23 through 28 maturities yet to refinance. These bonds will be a six-year term, the new bonds. We'll enroll you in the state credit enhancement program, which is a program where the state will actually step in and make payments should there be a default. What that does, it doesn't cost you anything. You just have to enroll in it. And what it does is it brings you a little better interest rate when you sell the bonds because of the lower risk. We will get a rating from Moody's. Your current rating is a AA2 rating. We will do a competitive sale on this, and we will be taking bids to get you the best price. And the process is what we call a parameter resolution. The reason being is because your regular meeting in October is on a federal holiday. The markets are closed. Typically, we would sell bonds the morning of one of your board meetings, bring them to you, and then you would authorize the sale of those bonds. Instead, because the markets are closed, we can't take bids, we're actually going to sell them several days earlier. And the resolution you have tonight will authorize your executive director of business or the superintendent and a board officer to sign off and award that sale on the day that we take the bids. And then you will ratify it at your October 11th meeting. There is a parameter of at least a 3% net present value savings, which should not be an issue hitting. So, we reviewed all your debt. We do it twice a year or more, if anything's coming up. You do have two bonds that next year you'll probably be looking at a refinancing. That will probably be in about the same size range as this, and we would probably combine them just like we are this time. So, next year, you'll have an opportunity to save some money also. So, skipping out at the schedule. So, tonight, you have the authorizing resolution and the parameters. In... Before we sell the bonds, we'll get the rating. We'll put together the official statement and so forth. We'll take proposals on October 7th. And that's when administration and a board officer will sign off on the sale of the bonds. You'll ratify it on October 11th. The closing date is when the bond proceeds will come to the business office, is October 4th. And then on Feb... I'm sorry, November 4th. And then on February 1 of 2022, that's the call date on the old bonds. That's when those bonds will officially be paid off. The money will be wired, transferred to pay them off. Couple of highlights on the charts that we provided. If you're following along on page 7, you can see the two different portions of this bond. One is the refunding of the 13A. That's the all-facilities. You can see that that's a much larger portion than the capital facilities. We're estimating about $1 million in premium. And in this particular market, we're seeing virtually everything sell with a premium. That premium will reduce the amount of the bonds that you need, so therefore, it contributes directly to the savings. So, even if the coupon or interest rates on each of those maturities is the same as the old bonds, if you get $1 million upfront, that's going to contribute to the savings. So, page 8 is the old all-facility bonds. You can see they run through 2026. They have interest rates each... Unlike a house mortgage, where you have a fixed rate over a certain period of time, each principal payment carries its own interest rate. So, you can see, for example, in 2024, you have $3.4 million in principal. It carries a 3% interest rate. Now, many times, each year varies, but in this particular case, all four of those principal payments have the same interest rate on it. So, the next page, page 9, shows you the capital facility portion that we're refunding. And that varies from a 2.12% to 3%, depending on the maturity year. And it's a smaller portion of it. Then on page 10, we're showing the estimated new bonds. So, they run from 23 through 28. And down towards the bomb, you see a line called true interest cost. That's taking all that into account, the premium and everything. And it's about a .8%. So, less than 1% overall true interest cost on the sale of the bonds is what we're estimating. And then the last page, that is the main page, it shows that we're estimating about $818,000 worth of savings. And if rates stay where they are And if rates stay where they are and they don't fluctuate between now and when we sell the bonds, you'll actually save a little more because there's a little bit of cushion built into our estimates. And, which is about five and a quarter percent present value savings. So very nice refunding. Wanted to bring it to you guys and give you a chance to authorize the resolution to move ahead.
Do you have any questions, comments? Mary, go ahead.
So the first bond, and first of all, I appreciate the economies of scale because I totally agree with that, but the first bond was actually going to mature in 2026?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and that's the larger bond. That's the 12.5 million that we started off with. And then the other one was in February 2028. Now, you mentioned the net present value. When you extend the first one by two years, even with interest payments, and the other one was already out to 2028, the net present value doesn't change today as far as the amount we're paying out over the amortization of these bonds?
The first bond that ends in '26, two years shorter than the second bond, we will not be extending that. Instead, so within a single bond, we will have two separate schedules for internal purposes and reporting to the State Department, but the shorter one will not be extended to '28.
Okay, thank you. That explained the savings.
That was my exact same question.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think according to the page 12, you can kind of see it drop off on '27 and '28. Any other comments? No, I mean, since the 11 years I've been sitting on here, we've been doing this consistently and it, I, you know, it saves the taxpayers. I think at this point, we've been saving millions of dollars doing this. So I appreciate the fact that we continue to look at this at least, you know, twice a year, if not more. So, no, I always think this is a very good thing to take advantage of low interest rates. So we do this at home, so do it here. Okay, so with that, would someone like, oh, do we have to read this?
We have to read the...
So I think Michael will read the resolution, and then we'll take a motion in a second.
Resolution relating to $13,500,000 general obligation, alternative facilities and capital facilities refunding bonds, Series 2021A. Authorizing the issuance and authorizing the executive director of business services or superintendent and any board officer to award the sale thereof and to take such action and execute all documents necessary to accomplish said award and sale.
Okay, so with the resolution, do I have a motion to accept the resolution as read?
So made.
By Enrique, second by Mary. This is a roll call vote. Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Aye. That passes seven-zero.
Great, thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is the approval of the American Indian Response from PLSAS. I know we've talked about this at our previous, I think. Sam and Dan are here to...
Yep, we're back again, just to review once again and ask for your action on the resolution response to the American Indian non-concurrence that you received back on July 12th. And again, just to recap, we met with, we had a chance to meet with the six of seven of board members who were available to meet with us and brought it to the study session a couple of weeks ago. And the draft that we presented then is the presentation of the document that we have for you tonight.
Okay, any comments or questions?
No, I just wanted to explain, I am going to abstain from the vote. I've been out of town, and I didn't get a chance to attend the study session, and I had a lot of questions that I didn't get a chance to ask. So that's neither an approval nor disapproval. It's just that I don't feel prepared to make an adequate vote on this.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. All right. Thank you for the work put into this, and thank you for all, board, the six of us that, you know, gave input. I think it was important to do that. Okay, with that, I'll make a motion. Do I have a second to accept?
Second.
By Amy. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
That's 601. All right, thank you. Next up is our Community Edge Services Summer Highlights. LeAnn and Jenny. You coming to rescue us?
Hi, yes. PowerPoint?
That one.
That one. You're welcome.
We appreciate your tuxedo.
Anytime. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Good evening, board members. Dr. Terry Stallow, our superintendent and our student representative. Thank you for the opportunity for us to share Building Summer Together, our program highlights as part of Community Education's year-long learning. I am privileged to work with an awesome team who worked tirelessly to rebuild our summer programming.
LeAnn, I'm sorry, you, yeah, talk right into the mic. Thank you.
Thank you. To rebuild our summer programming options for students pre-K to adult. While school was out for the summer, community education was in full swing, keeping learners safe, engaged, contributing, and learning new skills to reach their full potential. We served over 5,200 learners as compared to 1,729 last summer. Pre-pandemic, we served over 5,300. We want to give a big shout-out to our community members who were all-in and trusted us in our safety protocols and chose to sign up and participate in our programs. For that, we are very grateful.
First of all, we could not have rebuilt our programs without teaming together with Carolyn Yegela, our youth programs assistant, and Bobby Burkholtz, the community ed admin assistant. This slide depicts our youth camp participation. Our youth camps were 48% of our total registrations. Of the 231 camps offered, 29 were Eastham camps that align with the district's strategic directions, and an additional nine were animal or nature-based. 25 camps were led by licensed teachers, including the ever-popular Create Your Own Food Truck with Amanda Fay. Two sessions with a total of 29 students created amazing food trucks ranging from sushi to cake pops to burgers and fries. Comments from participants included, "This camp promotes teamwork, creativity, cooking skills, and some marketing skills." It needs to be noted that Amanda Fay is not a fax teacher. Cooking is a passion of hers that she shares with our students in the summer. Seven camps supported high school programs and activities. For example, 40 youth ages 5 to 12 participated in the gymnastics camp that was ran by Priorlake High School coaches and team volunteers. Almost $2,500 in revenue from this camp was given back to the gymnastics team. An additional $8,500 was raised for the dance team from their camp and $2,000 for the mountain bike team from their clinic, and that list is not inclusive. Camp Connection. Camp Connection was designed for youth to create a whole-day camp experience with community ed supervision, linking morning camps and afternoon camps. So for example, we had students who participated in Summer Academy at Twin Oaks. They attended our Camp Connection, and then they participated in Afternoon Community Ed Camp. We were super excited to be chosen to host an AmeriCorps service member this summer. That's Camille's picture, and if you were lucky enough to meet her this summer, she was truly a gym. She is a Lakeville North graduate, and she'll be returning to St. Thomas this summer for her sophomore year. Camille assisted with greeting families and escorting students to classrooms. She engaged students in activities in between classes during Camp Connection. She led art-related breakout sessions for KidsCo and assisted with community ed camps. Here's some photos from a number of youth camps this summer, and I'm going to just share some positive comments that we got from families. Kitchen Boot Camp. My daughter absolutely loved this camp and said, "This is the best camp ever." Farmer for a Day. The hosts were fantastic, answered many questions, and worked with the kids very well. Farmer for a Day is a great example of a community partnership with a local business. It was put on at Gray Hobby Farm in Savage, just down the road from Priorlake High School. For the past two years, we've offered goat yoga at their facility. Actually, a total of 295 people to date have registered for goat yoga, in case you thought that was...
Including you.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I did. I had to try it. They developed, so we asked them to develop a program called Farmer for a Day. This is a program we actually had out at the Shakemee-Middaughaton a number of years ago, but they have not been hosting classes recently. And so we asked Rob Gray at Gray Hobby Farm if it's something he could replicate, and he did. In that program, students learned about raising chickens, they got to pick vegetables, and could milk a goat if they so chose.
Okay. We served 99 incoming kindergarten students in our Camp Connection program, which is taught by our district's licensed kindergarten teachers. The camp activities were designed to give students a sampling of a day in the life of kindergartners. The teachers guided students in social, emotional learning activities, daily routine activities, including exploring the outdoor learning sites. The teachers also helped students with separation anxiety and skills to enter kindergarten more confident. Three camps were offered at Hamilton Ridge, and two camps were offered at Jeffers Pond and Olo de Lago. Our goal next summer is to offer the camps at all of the elementary schools, so incoming kindergarten students can actually attend the school that they'll be attending in the fall. All sections were full with waitlists, and we added sections as the waitlist grew based on teacher availability. Kids Company served over 670 students. Incoming pre-K to third graders were at three locations, Hamilton Ridge, Jeffers Pond, and Westwood. And incoming fourth to sixth graders at Twin Oaks Middle School from 6:30 to 6:00 PM daily. Enrollment was up from summer 2020 by 196 students and down about 250 students based on our pre-COVID average enrollment of 920 students. We also continued our scheduling collaboration with the district's Summer School Academy and Extended School Year Services. This year, due to all the uncertainty in December, and when we do our planning for field trips, we do deposits, Valley Fair, and so on, and then the previous summer trying to get those deposits back, we were trying to figure out what to do. So what happened is the Kids Company sites decided to create weekly themes aligned to the strategic directions in our district, and in partnership with community education instructors, outside enrichment vendors such as the Rad Zoo. I think there's a photo up there. That theme was all things wild, and they would, they brought in reptiles. And also, community partners we worked with, such as the Three Rivers Park District, local libraries, and the Savage Fire and Police Departments. They did a vehicle display and tours, and you can see in the photo, and that was for the trains, planes, and automobiles theme. And it's featured in the photo. And I learned today that there was a parent who actually brought in a collection of RC airplanes, and I don't know what those are, but that was brought into one site. And then there was a student who brought in all kinds of demo, like cars, electronic cars. So that was fun to hear. Our summer swim program is interesting. It's been offered in our district, the summer swim lessons, for 50 years, for students six months to adults. The program started in 1971. I was actually 11 years old then. Amazing. And continues today because as a Lake community, we believe in teaching children and adults skills to be safe near water and in deep water. That's a unique feature to our program. And at the time that it started, we were about, we were the only pool in a 50-mile radius. And as you know now, we have a lot of pools available for school year program lessons. We also believe this program bonds our community together, and it allows youth ages 14 and up job readiness skills to be successful in the workforce. Many actually continue working for us through their college careers, and they become Red Cross certified water instructors and lifeguards, and/or lifeguards or both. I think, oh, enrollment. It was 1,300, and that's about our average pre-COVID, so we grew it back.
Okay, summer band. Summer Band is another great program led by licensed music teachers. The primary change this summer was the schedule. Previously, two days a week for five weeks. Summer lessons were five days a week for two weeks this year. Drivers Education. I laughed. I said, "It's kind of a staple in the district, but there is not anything too glamorous to say about it." Drivers Ed continued online this summer, and this, this fall, both online and in-person classes will be available. Now here, adult learners. For our adult programs, we saw an 86% increase in adult participation this summer, over the summer of 2019 with our in-person classes. And this was also the first summer that we offered virtual classes for adults over the summer. So these photos are just taken from a quick selection of classes that we had. You see some from Sailor's Greenhouse, which is another great community partner for us. No Mistakes Watercolor with Priorlake Artists and LeAnn's sister Dar Brooks is down in the bottom left-hand corner, and that is in our new classroom space at Grainwood. And that's typically a daytime class for us. And then finally, and I was joking with LeAnn, we did not pick the photos for this.
We did not, no.
But...
Ashley helped us.
That happens to be my dad learning to paint like Bob Ross. So I did take that photo, but I did not put it in the presentation. We are finding trends in our community, is that our community is super interested in classes where adults and youth can participate together. And by doing even more collaborating between youth programs and adult programs, we're finding much more crossover where adult instructors offer classes for youth and adults.
Okay. And lastly, facility use. Our facility use department tracked over 5,502 hours of classroom, pool, and field and gym usage for our community ed offerings. That's not including the Kids Company hours. And about 1,824 hours for community use of facilities. And we gave you a comparison on there. You probably had it in your board packet. It's hard to see it on the slide. And we appreciated the flexibility of the district's principals, the operation team, and all of the custodial staff, who were very supportive of our programs and responsive to our needs. Thank you for your time tonight. Are there any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments? Jonathan?
Enjoyed being a part of kind of hearing this on the front end at the committee meeting last week. I, I think the most remarkable thing about some of these numbers is how many of them, when you looked at your 2019 numbers to your 2021 numbers, where you've had some really significant increases, and you just mentioned the 86% increase in adults participating. And I think that's maybe one of the silver linings of the past couple of years, is people have an interest in coming back and, and doing these kind of things close to home. And I, I hope that it gets some folks that want to come back. I'm looking forward to Sam's class coming up.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That was wonderful. Okay, next up is technology levy presentation. I think there's a number of people presenting.
Yeah, I think Marcus and, Marcus and I'll start, and we're certain there'll be some questions or comments that others will come in on for sure. Good evening, board members. You have been on a long journey of discussions, research, study, input, and ultimately making the decision to put a request on the November 2nd ballot for a referendum. Tonight, we'll share an overview of the technology levy presentation that will be similar to the presentations that we do for staff, for parents, families, community organizations in the upcoming weeks. We know how important it is for our community to have information that they need in order to make an informed decision. The video you watched during Laker Pride showed the last 18 months of change, interruption, uncertainty, and pivots, and the many ways our PLSAS stakeholders were all-in for our students. Therefore, our district theme this year is we are PLSAS, all-in. All-in honors our staff. It honors their synergy and the momentum that they will continue to bring into this next school year. We've also seen how our students have been all-in with adaptability caused by the pandemic, and we're grateful to our families and our community, who have also been all-in in supporting our students and the work of the school district. Our students needed us to be all-in in the last 18 months, and they certainly are going to need us in new and different ways to support them as we enter this next year. Last year, our staff transformed the way that we delivered instruction, the way they connected with students, and changed the way that we think about school health and safety. As circumstances changed weekly and often daily, our staff arose to the challenges to ensure that our students received a high-quality education in a safe environment. Last year ended on a really positive note with the return to an all, an in-person outdoor graduation at Dan Patch Stadium, and the ability to lift some of the restrictions for the summer programming that you just heard LeAnn and Jenny talking about. This year, we returned to in-person learning, five days a week. And like I said, it was a huge celebration to see students in buildings today. We've also been carefully tracking our health and safety information from public health officials in an effort to help ensure that our buildings remain safe places to learn and to work, with again, our goal of keeping students in person all year long, five days a week. In spite of the pandemic, our focus has been and continues to be the promise of our mission for each and every one of our students, and that is to educate all learners to reach their full... full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. We're thrilled with how our parents view us. In the Morris Leatherman survey that we took last spring, nearly nine out of 10 of those who responded believe our schools are good value for their investment, and they also rate the quality of our education as excellent or good. Our mission is clear, we focus on every student in preparing them for our ever-changing global community. Our strategic plan guides our work. All six areas or our strategic directions are that plan that are critical to providing the quality education that our students deserve and our community expects. And all require and rely on up-to-date technology in order for that to happen. As we looked at the role technology plays in our schools and how to maintain it, we spent nearly a year talking with and listening to our stakeholders. Here's a summary of what we heard. These items are what our students and staff feel are must-haves. Physical keyboards are one example of the essential conditions needed to help continue building student success. If voters approve this technology funding, we will create a comprehensive plan to account for these essential conditions while maintaining and enhancing our district's strong eSTEM, Environmental Education, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math tradition. In addition, it's critical that the 10-year technology levy also builds a device replacement cycle so that staff and students have technology that meet their teaching and learning needs. A 10-year voter-approved technology levy would include three replacement cycles with ever-evolving technology. We also ask community members for their views on technology in schools. While a majority of our community believes that technology is absolutely essential for our students, most rate our technology quality as good, not excellent. That tells us we have room for improvement as we seek excellence in technology, which is an area of critical importance to ensure excellence in the learning environment. In addition to examining the role of technology in learning, we looked at our finances. First, state funding. All school districts rely heavily on state funding to provide education to our over 8,700 students from preschool through grade eight, or grade 12, I'm sorry. While the state has periodically made investments in education, the per-student amount of revenue, which is really the bread and butter of our funding, has not kept pace with inflation for nearly 20 years, resulting in a funding gap. If it had, we would have received $5 million more last year alone. Unfortunately, the projections show that this gap will actually increase over the next few years. In addition to the critical, in addition, critical state mandated programs to support student needs cost the district a million more dollars than it receives each year from the state and federal government for these services, putting additional pressure on the district's general operating budget. There's also been a lot of talk about the COVID relief dollars going to schools. While we're grateful for these COVID relief dollars and we've needed them, they are one-time funds designed to help schools cover pandemic-related costs and will not help with our long-term budget sustainability or our technology needs. The pandemic required us to go from one device per student in grades eight through 12 to ensuring all students, grades K through 12, had their own device. We spend about $3.5 million currently on our technology needs, but without a dedicated source of funding such as a technology levy, those dollars come from our operating budget. That means technology is competing with other just-as-critical needs such as classroom materials, curriculum, staff, and other operating costs. The combined result of these financial pressures has resulted in a $5 million budget adjustment in the past two years, and at this time, we anticipate additional adjustments of $2 million in the year ahead to maintain our fund balance policy. State law allows for school districts to ask voters to approve a dedicated source of funding for technology, called a capital projects levy for technology, or a technology levy for short. We're one of the only comparable and neighboring districts without this locally-approved funding. This chart shows that currently, the districts we compare to have anywhere from $2.7 million annually for a tech levy to more than $8 million annually for technology funding. And many districts have received this funding for several years. Based on our technology needs and our financial realities, we have a request for a technology levy on the November 2, 2021 ballot. If approved by our community, it would provide $3.5 million per year for 10 years. The tax impact of this levy would be less than $17 per month for our average homeowner. Dedicated technology funding allows for additional dollars for technology that will allow us to spend critical dollars on other student and classroom needs. Technology levy funds would enable us to address learning, safety, and support needs. Specifically, we'd be able to provide all students and staff with devices to meet their needs, give us flexibility to personalize learning through emerging technologies in our classrooms and through online resources, improve our building's security and safety, increase our tech support so that they, our staff, can be responsive to serve the many needs of students and staff technology needs, and to maintain the infrastructure that is so critical for properly functioning technology. Voters need to know the consequences of both a successful or a failed referendum vote. So if voters approve our request in November, these are the benefits for the three areas that we've outlined. And you can see the equitable access to instructional technology for students and staff on that four-year replacement cycle, access to instructional software and hardware, digital curriculum, and those resources. Student information systems and learning platforms would also be maintained, what we currently do, and we'd be able to maintain those as well. For safety, we'd be able to have the funds to sustain and enhance our school safety and security measures, and all of that supports our crisis management plan. And in terms of additional support, the sustainable funding would help to acquire and maintain critical technology infrastructure and adequate staffing to support our student learning as well as professional development and training for our staff. If not approved by voters in November, there are negative consequences that would also take place, including continued pressure on the general fund resulting in continued budget cuts. We know that we'd have fewer devices for students, and in order to maintain that one-to-one that we currently have would be very difficult, if not impossible. Our staff devices would continue to be outdated. We wouldn't be able to sustain and enhance the security measures that we have. We'd be unable to keep up with requests for help because our staff would not, we wouldn't have additional staff. And then again, as I said, it would have additional financial burden on our general fund. So in summary, there will be a $3.5 million a year 10-year technology levy request on the November 2, 2021 ballot. Funds for the technology are going to, will be for learning, the devices, curriculum, equipment, communication; for safety, school safety, crisis management; and for support, both in terms of staff and infrastructure. And the tax impact, again, on this would be less than $17 a month for an average homeowner. There's lots of information on our website, so I certainly invite the public to look at that. And as I said, we'll be presenting this to several groups of staff, of community members, of parents over the next several weeks. And we also do have a video that we'd like to share that will be on our website, and people can see this as, the information that I just shared will be a part of this as well. Thanks, Marcus.
The reason why I love working for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools is that it's always a student-first focus.
I've lived here over 20 years. I love this community.
It's really the people who are here that make it home.
On November 2, Prior Lake Savage Area School District residents will be asked to vote on a 10-year, $3.5 million per year technology levy funding request for our schools. This levy would help provide our students and staff with the tools and support they need to maximize classroom learning, keep technology infrastructure up to date, and enhance school safety and security.
Current state of technology in our district is varied. We have a number of aging devices for students K through 12. We try to maintain a replacement plan, but with the current funding in place, that's not always the case.
And as devices and systems become older, reliability decreases. It creates a lot of frustration for both teachers and students.
Funding would support learning in the classroom by supplying up-to-date devices for all students and staff, provide instructional software and resources, upgrade and maintain classroom equipment, and enhance communications with our students and families.
Technology has definitely transformed the way I teach. It helps me to engage my students. It's teaching them not only the academic skills that I'm assigning, but a lot of social skills and problem-solving and troubleshooting.
Clearly, our students are future workforce, and we want to make sure that we are shaping them for what they need to know coming out of school.
The levy would also provide funding for critical school safety and security systems as well as crisis management.
It is our job to provide a safe, secure learning environment for all students. A lot of these systems and services are technology-related, they are computer-based, and there's a cost associated with that.
In addition, the levy would provide funding to bolster the district's technology staff and infrastructure.
We currently have two employees that are maintaining 8,000 old devices. As newer technologies emerge and are rolled out, we need to make sure that we have an LPD for our teachers and our support staff so that they can use this equipment as efficiently and effectively as possible.
If the levy is approved, the tax impact would be less than $17 per month for the average homeowner. If the referendum does not pass, there would be continued pressure on the general operating budget, competing for dollars required for other classroom and school needs. The resulting cuts would be felt district-wide and negatively impact our ability to provide devices for all students, keep our security equipment updated, provide timely tech support to students and staff, and maintain and update our staff training in technology infrastructures.
These students are learning and growing and changing, and providing them technology gives them the chance to grow some of these lifelong skills that are going to influence them throughout the rest of their life.
Please learn more about the referendum, and remember to vote on or before November
Thank you, board members. There's no action taken, we just wanted to be sure that you got a chance to see this presentation. I know you're the ones who have been working on this for well over a year and helping us get to the place of making the decision to go out to our voters. Our job now is to educate them. I think we've got about 25 presentations planned at this point, and when we finalize that, I'll send it out to board members so that you can join us as we meet with community members and families and staff over the next couple of months. Any questions, comments, anything else?
No, I know we're looking forward to that, going on the roadshow. I know a number of us have talked about joining you, so we're looking forward to that, and thank you for putting that together. I think it was wonderful. I think it's a good representation of what's happening, and yeah, let's get the info out there.
Excellent. Good, I think there's also some information at your tables, just some of the information that we have out there, we provided to you as well. So if there's anything else you need, don't hesitate to ask. Thanks, Marcus.
Welcome.
All right. Next up is the joint powers agreement with the city of Prior Lake. The Youth Relations Officer, School Resource Officer, Julie?
Good evening, once again. You have before you the SRO agreement. This really hasn't changed a whole lot in terms of what the agreement has looked like in the past. The dollar amount has increased a little bit, but it's been a catch-up because in the past, it's been about a 2% increase, and those costs have increased a little bit more than that. And also, this is now that the officer will be in our buildings three days a week instead of five. And so that's what this agreement is with the city of Prior Lake. I believe they brought it last night to the city council and tonight to the board meeting. Any questions?
Go ahead, Mary.
How many resource officers do we have across? I know we get some from Savage and Prior Lake, what is the total?
One of each.
One of each? And so we're taking the current resource officer from Prior Lake down from five days a week to three days a week? Okay, did we do the same thing with the, no? No, I've got no problem with the SRO, the cost, et cetera. However, I would like to just ask a general question. How many resource officers do we really need?
Everyone?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, and I think, pardon, and I know we've got principals here as well that could speak to this as well. You know, we know the value of having a resource officer to build the relationships, to provide the support with our students, so certainly to be as proactive as possible and building those relationships. You know, I think right now, and again, I see Sasha, I see Dan, who was just a principal. I don't know that there's been a request for additional. I think as the high school continues to grow, that's something we're going to need to take a look at, and I know there's already been conversations around that.
My last question is, is the resource officers, at one point in time, they were funded by the Safe Schools Levy, is that still the case?
That is still the case.
Okay. And the Safe Schools Levy have not increased, so, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the joint powers agreement with the city of Prior Lake?
So may.
By Mary, a second?
Second.
By Jonathan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Next up is a resolution related to absentee, and I think Michael's going to read, or Dr. Stone, are you going to present it, or Michael? I think Michael's just going to read it.
I'm just going to read it, okay. "Be it resolved by the school board, the Board of Independent School District Number 719, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, Minnesota, the school district as follows. It is hereby found, determined, and declared that the board hereby establishes the school district office 4540, Tower Street, Southeast, Prior Lake, Minnesota, as a location for absentee voting with respect to school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election."
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution as read?
So may.
By Amy, a second?
Second.
By Enrique? This is a roll call vote. Amy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 7-0. And the final resolution for this evening is so that we can conduct business on a holiday, and I think Michael's going to read that, so go ahead, Michael.
"Be it resolved, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, PLSAS authorizes school business to be conducted on Christopher Columbus Day, also declared Indigenous People Day by the governor's previous proclamations, the second Monday of October, per MS 645.44 subdivision 5."
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution as read?
So may.
By Julie, a second?
Second.
By Mary, this is a roll call vote. Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Aye, that passes 7-0. And then policies, I don't believe we have any policies this evening. And then we're at administrative reports. Superintendent report?
Thank you very much. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And tonight, I'd like to highlight some of the work in which we've been engaged to make that happen. First of all, as I've said a number of times now, school has started. School started for our secondary students today. Elementary assessment and welcoming day have been underway with them beginning school and coming back on Friday, September 10, for kindergarten through fifth grade. We'll welcome Circle of Friends Preschool back next week on Monday, and it was just really a fun day. I was in both middle schools, and I know many of you were welcoming our middle school students and our ninth graders as they came in. At Prior Lake High School, we had our link crew, upperclassmen, helping freshmen and welcoming them in, and just tons of energy and really fun to see for both our ninth graders as well as our older students. It's been great to see the excitement on students' faces, our teachers, custodians, bus drivers, food service staff, principals, and all other staff. Teachers have been, have had that same excitement on that first day of school, so it's been really exciting, and I know many of you are going to be in schools throughout the week as we welcome the rest of our students back. In terms of our back-to-school safe learning plan, as you know, we've been carefully tracking the health and safety the health and safety information from our public health officials, and we'll continue to ensure that our schools are safe places to learn and safe places to work. We posted information on our website, and we've got also a frequently-asked question page. We'll continue to update that as more information or more questions come to us. Our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools COVID-nineteen Incident Command Team will continue to meet with Scott County, excuse me, Scott County Public Health on a weekly basis, so our next meeting will be tomorrow. And then lastly, in addition to the technology levy presentations, as we start a new school year and our mission remains strong, coming out of a pandemic and even before that, we are going to, I'm going to have a live stream state of the schools presentation at seven o'clock on September twenty-second, where I'll highlight what's new in the district and where we are headed. The public can access that link from our homepage, but we'll do that in the next couple of weeks on September twenty-second, just kind of as a way to remind people that we're here, we're serving, and we've been through a lot, but we have a whole lot of great news and great days in front of us.
Thank you. Administrative reports.
Good evening. I do want to update you on enrollment. As Dr. Stallow said, we have some of our schools back in session today, but not all of them. Usually at our first board meeting in September, we're, have all students in session, so actually, we're still enrolling some students into our district, and so I don't have some final first-day-of-school numbers for you yet. We have declined a little bit since the last report. I've given you about thirty students fewer than we were at the last board meeting, our boardwork session. But like I said, that we're still enrolling students and welcoming them to school. Also, an update, about three hours ago, the levy certification came out for our review for the preliminary levy. I'll be going over that and making adjustments as necessary to that and bringing that to the board at the September work session for a review, and then the board will open the meeting to approve a preliminary levy certification. And then our audit will be coming forward at the same time, preliminary information at the work session. Remember that our single audit, which audits all of our federal funds, will be later because that, the rulings and the regulations for what needs to be audited aren't complete yet, and so many school districts are waiting for that information to move forward with the single audits, but we will bring forward our regular information. We have been audited on some of our federal funding, and that, but they may need to audit more, and so just truly, depending on what comes out from the federal government in terms of what needs to be audited, we'll make that determination. And also in front of you, I've given you an updated federal funding, COVID funding overview. This is as of today. There is some new news that, since we've discussed this in the past, I think I brought it a couple of months ago. We have, and each of these gives all of the different funding sources that we have, and I just want to remind you that each and every one of these is one-time funding, and each and every one of these has required spending on how we must spend these funds. And so many times, we were spending money, especially last year, on making sure that we had the proper PPE and the proper, and all the things we needed for tier-one childcare, monitors, if you remember, all of those things that we needed to, and additional teachers for online learning. We had a lot of those expenses last year, and so that funding covered those costs for the district. And recently, if you look on page, the third page, we received some additional funding for SR three. You've seen this all up through page three, you've seen this previously, all the summer funding that we have until next year to spend those fundings for learning loss and learning recovery. But on the very back page, we also have just recently received some additional funding for specifically for special education, for K-twelve special education students and for pre-K special education students, so two different pots of money, and those are also specifically for learning loss, addressing that and IEP needs for those students. And then the Governor Walz just recently came out, and I've updated the, some enrollment loss, additional revenue for enrollment loss. He's giving districts an additional thirteen-hundred dollars per student loss between two thousand nineteen-twenty and two thousand twenty-twenty-one. For our district, that's about sixty-five students. And so it's, if I calculate that, and we haven't received anything official in terms of that's the actual number, it's around eighty-thousand dollars. So there is a little bit of money there coming in one time. Again, these are one-time funds for the district. Certainly, that declining enrollment allowance is significantly less than what the district would receive if the students were actually in attendance in the district. And so it does help a little bit, but as you know, eighty-thousand dollars in our hundred-and-five million-dollar revenue budget is helpful, but it's not as much as it would be if we were actually had the students in the district. So I wanted to update you with this information. I have dated it, and so we'll put this on the website under the business office page in case anybody wants to see the funding that the district's received and what we've spent those, the money on. It also shows a lot of the requirements. It's, it's a summary, so just keep in mind, there are probably a lot more requirements out here than what you're seeing, but I did want you to see the summary of this and let people know that that is out there. And again, all one-time funding for the district to help cover those one-time expenses that we had for, due to COVID.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for putting that together. Jim? No? Bella, did you? I don't know. You guys, yeah, perfect.
Report?
So as many have said, today was the first day of school. At the high school, our Link Crew was able to take over the first day and have only freshmen and our Link Crew members in the building, so they were able to just give them a orientation and walk through the building. I think from what I've heard, especially with all the new additions and being online the past year or so, it was really helpful for students to be able to have that personalized time for them. As a senior this year who was online all last year, excited does not even begin to describe how excited I am to be in school for the first time in over a year tomorrow, and I think that goes for many students. For student council, we were able to have three summer meetings, all hosted at different executive board members' houses, and it was nice to be able to see everyone's faces once again, and we began to plan our homecoming, which we're excited to be able to put on for the first time in a year this year. We are also doing some volunteering at our Prior Lake Chalk Fest coming up this weekend, I believe, and for our homecoming, we're being able to find new ways to kind of involve our students in events like our coronation and our pep fest that in the past we haven't because we're really trying to focus this year on re-engaging students and getting kids who maybe in the, two years ago, didn't go to any school events to say, you know what? Let's go. So we're doing a lot of work to kind of get things more excited than they have been in the past, and just to kind of get students excited to be back at school, so, yeah.
Great. Any other board reports? Now, we're just kind of starting up with some of our, okay, Jonathan?
Just a couple of quick things. Scale meeting last month was kind of a roundtable of all of the superintendents from the county walking through what had happened over the past year and what their outlook was for this year, how they all dealt with things. It was really interesting to hear different perspectives from the other districts and the other folks, and it was also interesting and very clear to me that all of them in that group kind of see one of those folks as, as kind of their leader, and she's at our board table every month, or every meeting. So Dr. Stallow was clearly looked at as the person that everybody's looking to for how they did everything and kind of led that discussion. Community Ed Advisory Council last week, and I'm excited to hear, again, their report and everything that came back. Fun to welcome students back this morning, and I'd like to say a special welcome to our new student representative on the board. Kind of nice to see you.
All right. Michael, did you?
I was just going to quickly comment, too. I know several of you were in buildings today, and we followed Dr. Stallow to the two middle schools and high school, and for any parents listening, the focus today was totally on making those students comfortable. Everything from a sixth grader who had misplaced their iPad but thought they lost it in tears, and somebody, you know, teacher comes right over and breathes with them, and we just happened to be visiting a classroom where the beeping went off, and we found that iPad and got it returned. But every time we turned around, all staff, we heard them saying, how can I help? Can I help? Do you know where you're going? What can I do for you today? And I just want to commend and thank both the administration and the staff for creating that sort of environment for kids. And at the middle school, it's interesting, not only were sixth graders new, but for seventh graders, it was the first time using a locker or, you know, seeing the school for some of them, so I just hats off to everybody who made that experience so warm and welcoming.
I agree. Amy remembered how to do a locker today. Yeah, she did. Future events. First day of school, September tenth, for grades K through five is, obviously, is Friday. Fall Community Fest, September twentieth, Prior Lake High School, six to eight-thirty. Absentee voting begins at the DSE September seventeenth until Election Day. School board study session, September twenty-seventh, the DSE here at six o'clock. And then with that, I would take a motion to go to closed session for discussion of negotiating strategy. Do I have a motion to do that?
So made.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Enrique, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven-zero. We'll take a five-minute break.